Entered into the recruiting process for a new city manager. And, you know, the purpose of that work plan is really for council to set priorities for the city going into a budgeting cycle. So Dennis had that going into the 24-25 budgeting cycle, but it is quite old. And a lot of things have happened in our city. And so, you know, Dennis has been out. We haven't been able to meet on the work plan. We're getting ready to go into the 25-26 budget without council guidance on priorities. So I was proposing that we have a workshop. I can't imagine it would take more than three to four hours max. And I think the work plan is in your packet. I'm just envisioning, you know, the department heads there. We kind of go through the SWOT, you know, the strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and threats. We don't have to do the vision, the mission, the values. We don't have to address those. Those are like more of a strategic look at the city. But I'm hoping that we can take a look at the priorities that we developed back in '23 and see if they're still relevant for the 25-26 cycle. Give Dennis some guidance. I don't think we have to develop each individual goal on council. I think the council needs to just provide the overall priorities that we want to see in this upcoming budget. And then Dennis can take those priorities, develop the goals, you know, by department or however he wants to develop them so that we can accomplish our focus.
I agree with that. And I was just going to mention, I went to the new leaders orientation at the COG last week. And Mr. Jim Reed was talking about roles of council and roles of city in a city manager council form of government. And he said, if your city was a car, the owners are the residents. The council is the one that decides what direction we're going. And the city manager decides the route we're going to use to get there. I thought that was a pretty good explanation for me anyhow, for city council. So I like that idea of just doing a, I don't think, I agree, I don't think it would take long. Last time we went through all the visions and all that, and we can do a quick look at it if we needed to. But just basically, I think if we look at what we did last time and see how does it need to be updated? Because last time, our big emphasis was on roads. And now we've got some water issues and drainage issues that we may want to bring up as a goal for the city also. Okay? So basically, it's then just deciding on what date we might want to do that?
Yeah. If, gents, anything, anything to add? Yeah, so I concur. Looking at the, looking at what's in our packet, which was the previous, yeah, there's, Dorothy, you're right, you're spot on. I mean, there's a lot of things that we've actually completed that are in here and that are no longer relevant. You know, develop a parks and rec committee done, hazard mitigation plan done. So those are the kind of things that we can pull off and restructure. So, yeah, I'm on board with a workshop. Dennis, if you think we can, we can pull something like that off?
No doubt we can and just really find a date. You all want us to poll everyone for the month of, say, the early part of August? Would that be okay? Because, well, I know we got the 12th. You want to do it all in one meeting or you want to try to split it up in two?
I think we can do it in one.
Okay.
I do too.
Okay. So why don't we do the 12th meeting coming up? Because we've got some stuff, staff is working on on the proposed budget. So if we can just, probably the following week, if that works for everybody, and we'll send it out, Naida will get a message out to everybody, make sure we're solid on the date and the time. Five o'clock sound okay for everybody?
Sure.
So we know it's five o'clock. Do what?
I'm going to be in for the August 12th meeting. And I will be in town that week. Not that it matters, but I will be out of town the following week. I can still do it remotely. But if we, I don't mind having two meetings in one week.
Okay.
I get back like the ninth, so I could have it the 11th, the 13th, 14th, 15th, whatever. If that works for everybody else. If not, I'll just call in again.
Y'all want, we got the 12th. We already know we're going to do that one. So that's that same week. If you're all okay, we'll try to squeeze one in, one more in that week and get it done with? After the 12th. We'll do the 12th regular meeting and the workshop and the regular meeting. And then probably Wednesday or Thursday, we'll try to get that other meeting just specifically for this purpose.
And I don't mind a Saturday morning.
Or do what?
Oh, I don't mind a Saturday morning meeting too, if that works better for people.
Okay. I have that whole week open. What do you say? You're coming back in on the 12th?
I am arriving.
I'm coming back in on the night.
And hopefully, I'll get home in time to come to the meeting.
Okay. Okay. And you're coming in on the 9th. Do you have any conflict on the first, second week of August?
Nope, none.
Do you, Stephen? Okay. Okay. So if we could think about the 13th or 14th, Jimbo, what about you?
I'm wide open.
Okay.
13th or 14th?
13th or 14th. And we could, I mean, if, if it works with everybody else, we could even have a daytime meeting if we wanted to. Clock or something. You prefer that?
That works for me.
One o'clock on like maybe the 13th, the day after? When? Wednesday, the 13th? Okay, okay.
No, you're good.
13th or 14th work, I think, for most of us. So that would be, if we could kind of figure on that, maybe at one o'clock. And then we could just, yeah, still have my brain working.
And then maybe the department heads, you know, will be more available too and during the workday.
Okay. You got, you got that copied down.
Thank you.
Okay, 25062 is the 23-24 budget amendment recognizing revenues and expenditures and carryforwards. See, Mary moving to the mic, so tag your it.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Mayor, city manager, city council. I emailed the information on the different budget amendments. And the backup, I'm going to go through number 12 first because I know that there might be some questions on that one. The backup looks something like this. It's pink and blue on the backup.
I can't hear Mary.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Better?
Yes.
Okay. So the handout, it's, the attachment has highlighted pink and blue. The pink area, the pink rows are the items or the expenditures that need to be moved to 23-24. Now, on the budget amendment, the amount on the budget says 1.4. That is incorrect. The information that I had at the time. But upon doing further research, the actual current budget that was adopted in 23-24 was zero. On the revenue and expenditure report, what you see there is what the balance is. The city, and it's common that when expenditures happen and there's not money appropriated in that line item, those expenses get charged to that account. So as of right now, that appears to be the situation for that account. So there is a balance per se in that account. Somehow, money was, is being shown there, but it may not be accurate. So as far as adopted for that line item for 23-24, there was no budget adopted for that line item, account number. So the purpose of this-
That's my understanding also.
Yes. So the, the reason that I brought this to you is because, as you know, we're getting ready for the 23-24 audit as well as 24-25 at the same time. So in order to line up the accounts the way we need to, I need to move the expenditures to the proper place. And then we can balance and figure out how we're going to move revenue to the correct years to cover the expenses. This backup sheet that I provided for you kind of just gives you a little bit of a sample. If you, the blue shows that, and if you look at the dates, it says 9/27/2024. But the work that it was done was in July. So there was a lag between when the work was getting done, when the invoices were coming in and everything was getting paid. And that has been one of the areas of concern for the current audit that we're doing, the 22-23, is we're being asked to provide invoices and checks. And the invoices are one date, but the checks are months later and sometimes even a year later. So this is, what I'm trying to do is move the expenses where they need to be. And then we'll know where the holes are, where we need to do the actual revenue amendments as well. So it's going to be, I don't want to say a little messy, but this does need to go to 23-24. This expenditure does need to go.
Can I make a suggestion?
Absolutely, ma'am.
Okay. I suggest we hold on this ordinance and determine the amount because I cannot get to any of the numbers on this ordinance based on last year's budget, this year's actual, the reports you've just sent us for June. And that way, we can do the expense and the revenue at the same time. And I think it'll be a fuller picture. And I don't know that there's an immediate need right now to get that done. If we can have it at the August meeting, we can probably approve it at the August meeting. I don't know, right now, these numbers, uncomfortable with them.
Okay. I just want to stress to you, though, that the revenue and expenditure report, when you look at the amount where it says, like, the prior year balance and all that, that is not the actual adopted balance that went through that was adopted. That's just the actual balance on that account. And whatever the city council decides, that's fine with me. Whatever you, whatever you all want, I'm good with.
Well, I think it'll be helpful to get, this is a big, this is our biggest project we've ever done in the whole city. It's a $4 million project. It was funded by $2 million certificate of obligation, a million dollars, a million ones, one or two from ARPA funds. And the rest has to come out of the water fund balance to fund this project. So I think if the council could get, you know, one sheet of paper, here's the groundwater storage project, here's the funding for it, here's how much we have to take out of the fund balance, this is how it affects last year's budget. And I'm moving these expenses from '24, '25 into last year because the project was completed last year. And I understand that. I have no problem with the concept of the amendment. It's just the numbers. Jimbo, I wouldn't be comfortable signing this if I were you.
Yeah, yeah, no, there's, there's just the confusion over it. And it does kind of make sense to me to clean that up. So when, I mean, if that's, Dennis, do you have any input?
Well, the expenses are going to be the expenses no matter what. So if you all want to wait, you can wait. It's just a little delay on your part. We're only talking a couple of weeks, probably. It won't change anything there. Expenses won't go away. The project actually is still continued into 2025.
Yeah.
And I sent an official letter to Cobb Finley, let him know that we are going to switch over, I didn't say that, I just said, we need to end the engagement. And there's a 30-day window that that contract that we have with them from 2023, I think, that required that 30-day notice. So they've served it. They've got to get it. They're on a timeline. It's not an option. And if you all want to go the 12th, that's the 12th. There's different philosophies you could do. The expenses are not going to go away. They're going to have to hit that period, and that's what's nice about. But if you want to wait until you see the revenue, that's fine, but you're going to pay the bill either way. In fact, the bills have already been paid, actually.
Everything's been paid.
So really, it's more moving the expense within the period in which they really were occurred. And again, things have been all over the map, and this is just one more. But wait until the 12th, I don't really see anything.
Yeah, because we do have the other vendors, the other contractors. This is just one of them. We still have adjustments for Cobb Finley. This one was for, I can't even remember which vendor this one was, actually. I think this was the JM Pipeline. Yeah, it was JM Pipeline. So we have JM Pipeline, we have Cobb Finley, we have, what's the other one? JT Morales. So we have several. There's going to be a whole bunch. So what we were doing, as I was working with Peacock and going through, because we're still, as we were paying, because JM Pipeline, we have one final one, right? By tomorrow, it should be done. And then we're done. After we pay it tomorrow, we just got the invoice this morning. Then JM Pipeline would have been done. I kind of wanted to do vendor at a time, but that's fine. If you want us to do all three, then we'll try to get all three done by August.
I'm not as concerned about individual vendors as I am about the total cost of a $4 million project and how much we got funded from external funding and how much needs to come out of the water fund balance. And I understand whichever year you put it in that you think is appropriate is fine, but these numbers don't match anything that I have. I have, we spent $550,000 last year and like $700,000 this year. So I just would like it reconciled.
Okay, ma'am. Not a problem.
And I think it might help the rest of council also.
Yeah. So it, since, if I'm understanding this correctly, we're still in the workshop. So essentially, what's going to happen then during the regular session, since it is a discuss and consider, is I'll bring it forward. If there's no motion, then we just move on. Just table it.
Yeah. It'll be the same number next time, right? Just make adjustments.
Well, no, not necessarily.
No? Okay.
Well, we'll see. Because right now, well, that one's going to still be open. So it's tabled, you can keep the same.
Yeah. Because it'll be carried forward and I'll put them all.
As long as it's tabled, there's still-
We'll put them all in under 12. Okay. Not a problem. Okay, so the next one, which is 13, we did get some grant fund. And so you have copies of the checks as the backup. And the funds for that is going to go into the fire department to pay for hourly wages. And then we also got the FEMA check of $168,000. So Naida, thank you very much. She was the one that kind of spearheaded all of that reimbursement.
Thank you.
And $65,000 of that is going to go into those two accounts for the brush pickup for waste management, which is part of the PowerPoint later on, and also to the city manager contingency fund.
We're doing that just because we've been surprised numerous times this year on bills we didn't think we were going to have, didn't know about. And so that, if it doesn't get used for something along those lines, it will just stay there and roll over into fund balance at the end of the fiscal year.
Right. And that's what the 103 is doing. It's going back. It's just going to stay there and it'll roll into fund balance, that 103. Okay. And then so on, for, oh, sorry, 14.
Can I just make a comment on that one?
Yes, ma'am.
Not a big deal, but the $614,000 of the FEMA money that we did budget, that went into O2 double zero, 4810. And I can't find an account number 0210, 4810. And I'm thinking that we just put the 614 budget and this 168 budget all in one line item so we can see exactly how much we got from FEMA this year in one place.
Okay.
As long as it's in the same fund, you got to remember, we got to make sure we separate-
Oh, it is. It's a difference from-
Well, I'm just saying if some of this, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
10 versus 0200.
Yeah. I think the other one was FEMA and this was TIDIM. But that's fine. If y'all want it in the same one, as long as-
I'm sorry, I thought it was FEMA.
Well, it kind of is, but it's a Texas FEMA.
Yeah. They, they matched the 25%, whereas the FEMA did the 75. So that's why we got 100% reimbursement on that, on that disaster. So it, in a sense, it's-
However y'all want to do it. To me, it makes-
I don't think it really makes a difference from, as far as FEMA or FEMA. It's all, it's all related to the same disaster, same event, so.
Okay. I can put it in the other account.
Yeah, I think the, I think the account number's called federal grant money or something like that.
Right. Yes, ma'am.
So if it's, it's TIDIM federal or it's state?
It's a pass-through, but it's state. It goes through the state.
It should be state, but if it's pass-through financing, then that's, that's a caveat.
Yeah, but it's awarded to the state and the state gives it out.
Right, right.
I mean, however y'all want to do it, it makes no difference to me because I'll, I'll know, for me, state is here, federal's here. But if you want them together, I'll, I'll know. Makes no difference.
It's all from the same disaster, honestly, is what I kind of was thinking.
Yeah.
Okay. We can put it in the other account, not a big deal. Whatever y'all want.
And then I have a question about the brush.
Yes, ma'am.
So we did have a budget of 25, and as of May, we spent 24 of it.
Yes, ma'am.
And so this 35, I thought was, and you and I have already talked about this, Mary, I just want to make sure everybody else understands, that that 35 was about the amount that we need to pay to waste management for the June pickup. But what are we doing for July and August for the pickup of the debris? And should we include July and August in this number as long as we're making a, an ordinance change?
Texas Forestry Service met with staff probably a couple of months ago, I'm guessing, and, can you hear me? They said that, one of the suggestions was, or questions were, could it be buried? I talked to BJ, and we're thinking, at the current rate we're burning through that cash, it might be more prudent to bury it as long as it's Texas Forestry Service and all the parties and stakeholders involved are okay with it and just use the existing soil, topsoil that we have and at the site. BJ thinks we could bury it and cover it. Taryn suggested, I think, six inches. Where's BJ? BJ was a six inches mulch with eight inches of topsoil. He thinks he's got the, he can put them in a little ravine or a depression area covered with what's there. And I think we ought to try that and get rid of as much as we can that route first.
Yeah.
And BJ, has anything changed on that? Okay.
Yeah.
So that's where we're at. Unless council objects to that, that's where our plan is. And Texas Forestry Service says, yeah, that'd be fine because it's covered with dirt and there's no fire hazard to speak of.
And at the time-
So we're not going to continue with waste management?
Not at the price we're clipped, as much as it's costing. I would just say, pause it for now, they know it. And then let us see if we can get this other route, see how we can do it. And there's a lot, 35 acres out there, and there's some good depressions. Maybe we can get rid of most of it that way first. And then if you have to, yeah, we'll pick up the rest.
Yeah, we had a situation where the incinerator part, it went down, so they couldn't burn. So it couldn't burn. And then we hadn't received the, I guess, the mulcher, I think, or something that they were using. So we had to do something to get some of that wood that was heating up out of there for the safety of staff and stuff. So that was the best option at the time to try to see what was happening. But, and I'll go over it in the PowerPoint, the rainwater, just because it's, the way we get billed for waste management is on, by, by the ton. And so when it's wet, it's a lot heavier so that we get charged a lot more. And so that's one of the main reasons why it was also costing a lot of money was because we kept getting a lot of rain. And so that, it's really hard to predict what the cost might, when we have the weather the way we do.
Okay. Yeah, I understand. I just thought if we needed more money, we should do it now while we're all meeting. But if we don't, great, fantastic.
Wait, I don't want to put the cart before the horse. We might, I just don't, right now, I think we ought to try this other route first, and if it doesn't work, then we do what we got to do.
Yeah, I think we have the burn part already, right? For the, yeah, yeah. That's why we put a hold, because the part was already coming in so they could start burning.
It's up and running now, the incinerator.
For the residents, for the residents' information, have we resumed the debris cleanup in the neighborhoods?
BJ, yes, we have.
Yes, he's out there making them happy.
Thank you, BJ.
Okay, so that was 13. And then 12, I'm sorry, 14, is moving the remainder of the code enforcement expenditures to Department 10.
Yep, my only comment there is I think it's in Dennis's complete responsibility that he can move funds within, he can move money within a fund. And that's called a budget adjustment, I think. So technically, I think this ordinance might be a budget adjustment since it's all within the same fund, and it's moving dollar for dollar.
Can I, can I comment real quick? What a lot of cities do, and I would recommend it, there's nothing against, you can trust me in that sense, but I would say, let's, I'd recommend let the city managers do it within the department because usually that, between departments within the same fund, that's up to you all to make that decision. If you want that, I'd like it in writing, though, so that way, it's in an annually review to make sure the city manager's meeting that expectation. Because usually, a lot of cities, I'm assuming smaller's do the same one, but if it's not, if it's within the fund in their charter city, for example, it's usually clean where I came from, you can move it within the fund and no problem. But if I wanted to move it between funds, it had to go to the city council or city manager do it. Now, but here, historically, as I understand it, and I could be totally wrong, my understanding is, is in the department that we can make those adjustments. But if it's going to be between departments, it's been coming this way. Now, I don't know if that's the case or not. You all would know better than I do. If you're going to do it, and I think you're right, though-
I'm fine if the council-
Yeah, I think you're right. I think that's-
I'm fine bringing it before council. I think one's an amendment and one's an adjustment. It's just technicality, I think.
Right. I think it's, you know, however y'all want to do this tonight, but I take you what you're saying. I think maybe if we can reduce it into like a, again, looking towards that governance model where council says, this is what you are allowed to do. And then we formalize that and memorialize it to where whoever sits in my chair knows the rules and how it's got to be a bought, buy, buy. Because I'll tell you-
Sounds good.
There's a little caveat. Why I say that is because, well, not caveat, it's just one of the reasons, we've got an expense on a water fund that, that happened in '23. We don't know how it got there. We, staff caught it first, and then the auditors caught it, and we're still reconciling it. It didn't happen, from what I can gather, it deals with a loan for, for a fire truck, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right, Mary?
That's what it says on there, but you have-
That's what it says on there, but it's a GL entry. It doesn't make sense. No one's had one, and we're trying to flush that out with the auditor. So just because, because hence a fire truck alone, that's what it says, that's a more of a general fund. But it's coming out of, well, if it did, and there's, there's no indication it did, but it's reflected in a water fund. So that right there raises concern, and the auditors share the same concern we have. So it's getting flushed out. It could have been an entry error. Who knows what happened? There's nothing on the service that validates there's been $1.2 million spent on a fire truck. That said, that's something that the auditors are flushing out as well as us. And I, that's why I think it's really important to memorialize it and make sure the rules are clear that whoever sits in that chair doesn't take advantage of a situation saying, well, I can move between funds. No, they didn't say I couldn't. And I don't think they should be able to, to be honest.
Not between funds.
No, I'm just saying, I just said the same thing. I don't, I don't think you should ever let a city manager, whoever she, here she is, is move it between funds. But that obviously probably wasn't authorized because there was no record of it by council that I could find back in '23. So that's just for clarity purposes. I think in the funds, fine, as long as it's memorialized.
Okay, so yay. If I have to do a budget amendment for, or budget adjustments, whatever y'all want, I'll bring you the paperwork documentation. Just, I do want, if you could tell me, though, if you're okay with the backup. If you want to see more, are you okay with it? Just let me know so that I can make sure I can, I provide you. I know you all want it sooner, and I'm so sorry I couldn't get it to you sooner, but I just want to know, like, for the backup that you did get, if there's something else[1737.83] But I just want to know, like, for the backup that you did get, if there's something else that you'd like to see, then just let me know.
And it's important to highlight that even budget adjustments require documentation and from all levels. So we're from the department to the finance and to the city management. So yes.
Yeah, and the city manager should sign off.
Yes, yes, yes. Well, and the financial director and the city manager both, so we'll have those documentation regardless of what. And then the supporting documents still have to be there. Why, it has like, and all this stuff, we're making sure it gets loaded up like it's supposed to be. So in the long run, I think it will serve you well.
Thank you.
So let me ask you a question. Can I ask that real quick? Do you want this action, go ahead and just do this tonight as we're requesting? No harm, no foul, and then we can start looking towards that memorializing within the fund terminology.
Is for, and here's what an adjustment's for. So that's kind of outside of council's realm of influence. That's a, that's gap for governmental organizations.
True, but some, some cities actually regulate where they do place those restrictions on the city manager. Some don't.
You can't be more restrictive. I'm just trying to follow whatever you all want.
You want us to, this action item tonight or you want us to pull this item later on? It's something you all have to decide. It ain't gonna hurt to do what we have.
Doesn't matter to me because either way, I'm gonna enter it into the system, so.
Okay.
I'm, since it's, all it is is moving funds from one department to another within the general fund. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Just one word.
Just, just, and the reason it says amendment is because whatever you adopt in a budget, not by, we are fund driven, that's true. But whatever you adopt in a budget, there's a provision in the Texas Local Government Code that says that amendments will be dealt with. So I'm, I don't know, I would still say leave the amendment portion, you're not gonna hurt anything because it's amending the original budget as adopted. It's why we're saying that. It has nothing to do with the fund driven, okay.
Thank you. Any more questions? No? Okay.
But budget first, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go, go ahead. Yep, next up is, still there, and go.
Budget revenue expense report.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sorry.
All right, that was fast.
Revenue expense.
Okay, so you have this packet. Of course, you have what the, what the bank balance is. And then you have the revenue and expenditure report on there. Again, I do want to let you all know, and I, maybe if I could have, I know that you all go through it, but just so that you can understand why our concern is that um some of the items with the budget and expenditure report is a concern is because in the system, I don't think it shows it on this one actually, but in, in the, in the chart of accounts, in this 20 is health insurance. It'll say 6120 and then it'll say 6120 again, health insurance. But the way that particular account was tagged with an employee, it could have been 6120 for their health insurance. It could have been 6120 for their dental insurance, not their health insurance. Then you have an account 6111. So you're gonna see 6111, it'll say hourly. But you'll also see 6111 for part-time. So when you go into the actual payroll system, if an employee who was hourly was coded as part-time, then their salary was being taken out of the 6111 part-time instead of the 6111 hourly. So there's same thing for certificates. Everyone, everyone's getting paid correctly. We just need to go through and do an intensive review of all of the actual accounts. Because it was FunView uses decimals and FunView doesn't. So like 6111.0 was for a full-time, 6111.1 was part-time hourly. In FunView, there is no point zero or point one. So when the staff entered in personnel expenses to an individual virtual pay card, so to speak, they selected account numbers that may look correct, but they're drawing from the wrong account that was, that's in the fun of charts. And you can't really see it. It's something that you have to go in and look in. And so we are still working through some of that payroll for this month. Moving forward should be correct, but we need to go back and look at, at everything. And so I, I share this with you because I know you keep seeing payroll on, on the updates. It's, I want, I wish it was easy, but this isn't, this conversion, it has not been easy on the city. It has caused, the accounts needed to have been validated before things were, were, were being used. And so going back to clean up months of, of stuff is gonna take time for this year. But at least we're pretty up to, the best news is we're up to date with paying our bills. We know that the balance that you have here is the balance in the bank account. That we don't know of anything major out there anymore. So the, I can tell you that I feel a little bit better of the state of where we are, you know, financially. It's just the cleanup and the cleanup is gonna take some time. I, I, the audits are kind of killing us, but we're gonna get those through. But the cleanup is gonna take time and I'm really gonna let you know upfront, I'm gonna need patience. And I know the staff wants everything cleaned up as much as possible, but really it's just me and Amanda trying to clean up payroll. And we do, thank God we have Nicola. And they, I want you to know that Nicola looks through everything that I bring to you beforehand because I want to make sure I have that extra set of hands because they, they've worked with you as, at the city longer than I have, obviously. And so I want to make sure that you get the information the way you need it, the way you're used to getting it. Because that's the only way we're gonna move the city forward.
So Mary, how do you fix something like that if one, one is part-time and one is hourly?
We, we need to go back in and there's a lot of reversals that are gonna have to take place. And then you, it seems like it's easy, but again, every account number that you see here really has two other account numbers because it's a transfer in and transfer out, right? So it's not sometimes as easy as to say, okay, well, why can't you fix it? You know?
Can you create a separate, another account then? Like if one is dental and one is health?
Oh, yeah. Next year, 25, 26, I got you all covered. You're, trust me, you're gonna see, we're, yeah. I had a whole vision of what would have been awesome. But because of the historical nature of what's required for the city, you need to know how much money was sent, spent the previous year in an account. I'm, I don't want to use the word married, but we're stuck with the accounts the way they are now. But we can make some adjustments and I am making the adjustments. I can tell you right now, health insurance was not fully funded, budgeted for, for this, for this year on some of the accounts. So there, there is, there is a lot, there's still a lot of cleanup that needs to get done, but nothing compared to, to what it was like before. And I know it has been, you know, kind of stressful for staff and, you know, for the community. But there's been a lot of patience on a lot of, on a lot of people to try to get this done. And there's, there's still gonna have to be a lot of patience moving forward because it, it is a big, it is a big task. And I'm sorry that, to tell you that because I wish I could say, you know, I feel more comfortable getting ready for the audits for 23, 24. That's what this is about. And getting 24, 25 ready, we're starting the soft close for 24, 25. Staff already knows it's emergencies. Everything should have been ordered. We're paying everything, so we should pretty, we, we should have a pretty good number by the end of September where we stand for 24, 25. But that doesn't mean we're still not gonna have to clean up because we have expenses that we need to move around.
Well, I'm sorry that you inherited such a mess. And I know system conversions are always difficult. And I think we, yeah, I'm so sorry. And I appreciate your attitude and I appreciate your perseverance.
Well, the city's great. I mean, the community here is wonderful. And so I'm lucky I have Amanda and Ida's been helping out a lot. And again, I know the staff has taken, it, it's, it's different because, you know, you're used to, you know, getting your funds and spending the money. And I'm like, wait a minute, wait a minute. I have to make sure all the, you know, the dots are eyes and the Ts are crossed. And it's, it can be frustrating on their part, but at the same time, we, we owe it to the citizens to be accountable and transparent. So it's just gonna take us a while to get there. And I'm, I feel like I've been here for years. So I'm just saying, it's gonna take a while, so. And that's all I have to say about that.
Thanks, Mary.
Okay. Mayor, City Council, I want to take some time to talk about the fiscal year 25, 26 proposed budget that staff's working on right now. I'm gonna talk through some of those things that, that I think you all should consider. And there's no sense of throwing things in the proposed budget if, if the council doesn't have a consensus moving forward on some of these items. So I'm just gonna kind of go by fund and talk about them a little bit. Of course, you know, we had debt that dropped off this fiscal year. And so our tax rate's gonna drop, I think it's at seven now and it's going to go down. It was about seven cents, just under eight. And it's now like two and a half, 2.4 under this proposed budget is my guess from what I saw earlier. But right now, the proposed tax rate, if we didn't change it, it'd be 6253 per $100 valuation. That's where we're at. And we're not suggesting anything to change. By fund, I just want to go over a few things. One, we have a quarterly cleanup and it's getting bigger and busier and costlier every year. Right now, I think if BJ stepped out, but I think we're looking at around 25,000 a year. If we were to charge a $1 per meter, for example, fee, that would bring in about $24,000. That would pay for that program at least in part, if, even if it starts getting more expensive as time flies, and it likely will. Brush fee is another thing. We're gonna live with brush vegetative debris for some time to come. I don't see it ever changing. Trees grow. We are living basically under one big canopy. And it's gonna take a long time. And I know you all funded a fuel, fire fuel mitigation position, full-time equivalent. So we've got that started in the fire department. BJ has been authorized by a chipper and he's got chainsaws. We're trying to make sure we get the staffing where it should be. No additional in the budget, that is, but he's got a vacancy in it filled. It's gonna take a while, but that, that cost for, you think about it, the bins right now, we don't charge anybody anything for. And we do curbside pickup and that isn't an option. That's a TCQ requirement based off of the information they provided us that you can't have them come, residents go into the site and dump it themselves. They have to, it has to be curbside. Nida, that's correct, right? Curbside is one of the options that TCQ provided, that, the one that is easiest for us. And so we're gonna keep that.
Reasoning for that?
What?
What's the reasoning for that?
I don't remember the email, what it said. I don't know if it even told a reason. It's a federal, it's a state governing agency.
It seemed like it worked so well before.
You know, I, I don't know. The, do you know, Nida off the top of your head? We'll ask that question and get it back to you. The way I look at it is there's three provisions, three allowances, and that's the one that works best for us. We were doing it as a result of a need because we had FEMA at the site and, you know, it was a designated site. So we didn't want to do anything to jeopardize any funding in the future. Have it, well, you have them say, well, you violated that, so we're not able to pay you. We didn't want to risk that. So that said, we knew we had to go and still pick up the debris. So that's pretty much how we did it, similar to when those contractors came in to, to pick it up on a much slower and time-consuming basis. But I do think that that is the, of the options we had, that was the best one for us. And we'll figure it out. It's been a while since I've looked at it, so I don't remember it. But let's, let's get that information to you all. But the bottom line is, it's costly. The equipment's costly. And I was talking to BJ, he said it would be better if we had an excavator with a thumb attachment where we can just grab that debris and put it in where it needs to go. And so that's gonna cost some money that we don't right now have. At least it will, something's gonna be traded off in order to do that purchase. So I'd like you to consider a brush fee. I think Elton's at $3. Some cities have it in or they're, they don't have it broken down at all like clean. We just had one fee for everybody and it didn't have, it built in your trash and your debris as well, so vegetative debris. But I do think a $4 fee would not, that's my opinion. I think it'd be a good idea and I don't think it'd be too much to add that to the quarterly cleanup fee of $1. And the $4 fee would generate $96,000. And I think that would fund the program. The equipment's not cheap. And there's times when we're, some of the stuff may not be able to be burned. I can speak for BJ. I wish he had, got on the phones, but see if he's out there real quick and we'll see if he can comment on.
You know, Dennis, I'm wondering if we could do, and I know fees are easy because you just attach them to a water bill. But we have a lot of people that, you know, they don't, I'm sensitive to doing a blanket fee instead of a as-needed fee. Could there be any type of fee for coming by and picking up your brush as it's being used? Rather than just a blanket fee. And I don't need an answer right now, but is there another way?
Yeah. I would like you to see if we can come up with that answer. BJ, can you go up the mic real quick so these, so everybody can hear you? The question is on the brush fee is can we have kind of like a as-needed, those who actually are using that service pay for it, I guess is what you're saying. Dorothy, is that what you're? A user fee, basically.
Yeah, a user fee.
Instead of a flat rate that everybody pays. And we're talking about the $4 fee. I already talked to them about the $1 quarterly cleanup fee to offset that cost. Just give us your opinion of it and tell you what you think.
I don't know how easy that would be to build though, to build through City Hall. It seems like if we had one fee, like most cities do, then everybody just gets that, everybody has access to that service.
Now that you mention it, I know in Colleen, they had anything over a certain amount had to be built separately. And by doing that, they eventually, at least when I was there, they stopped saying, look, it's taking too much time. It's, of course, there's a lot more going on there because they were also picking up just normal trash in-house. So I would say that might be an issue. But the bottom line is if we don't find a way to offset, set it, it's getting more expensive. They do charge us by the ton. If we try to burn it, we've got one burner. Eventually, we're gonna, we may want to increase. I don't know. How long, this thing could last, I think we talked about this sometime in the future.
Oh, yeah. The brush pickup could last for, I mean, depending on how the city wants to move forward, either opening the pit back up down the road on Saturdays or the city continue picking up. I mean, this, this is gonna be.
TCQ won't, TCQ won't let us.
Well, this is gonna be an ongoing deal from here on out for us picking up brush.
Yeah, yeah, of course. I thought it was.
You know, maybe it can be, maybe it can be an optional fee annually. Like I either opt in or I opt out. If I opt in, I pay $4 a month. And then when I call for service, I'll get it because I'm paying for that service. If I opt out and I want that service, then, you know, it's not gonna be available. I mean, you're gonna have to pay. But I'm just thinking rather than a blanket fee, but I totally understand a blanket fee is easier to administer.
Well, and the equipment's, the equipment's gonna be expensive to purchase. Do you have a price on that yet, BJ?
Actually, that's who, why my phone rang. It was, it was a salesperson. We're looking roughly for a piece of used equipment, probably 140 to 150.
And what about a new one?
He didn't quote that yet, but I got used, but that's who I was on the phone with. That's why I walked in.
140, 150,000 dollars. The problem is it's so expensive to do this kind of stuff. But the good news is you know you're gonna use it for years to come and it's gonna be a way forward. Trees are gonna grow. You're always gonna have storms come through. There's always gonna be a need. So the question is, is I just want you to think about it. We don't, that, but I'm, I'm looking at that kind of proposal if you're all interested. If you don't want to do it, maybe there's a better way. I don't know. But I just want to let you know in the general fund, that's probably the only thing I'm looking at that I wanted to bring to your attention tonight.
Dennis, real, real quick on that, Dorothy, just kind of thinking through that as well. If, if you do the pay-as-you-go, so to speak, I think that becomes problematic with people. You know, we had that issue early on with the pit being closed. People complaining that, you know, random people were driving by and just dropping stuff on the side of the road. So then it becomes, you know, if I'm, if I'm paying for it, then, you know, what stops, you know, my neighbor from bringing, or somebody just piling stuff up? So I, I don't know if that, that becomes problematic.
I hear ya.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hear ya.
Yeah. Well, again, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. This is something you'd just be thinking about. In the water fund, you know, you all raised the water rates last year. One of the problems we're having, as we just heard, the, we had Ncode and we, now we have FunView. Two disparate systems and they are not user-friendly trying to bring that, merge those, that information together. We really don't have a good read on how much, I know we've got the money in the bank. We know what we got here. But we really need to get better accountability of our revenue when it comes in and make sure it's in the right account and make sure all the expenses are lined up like they should. And right now, it would be, I think it'd be wrong to even think about making adjustment, even for inflation purposes, until we know more about what we have in the water fund. So my recommendation to this year, I was not looking at recommending anything unless council tells us otherwise. Sewer fund's the same thing. It's, I think it's like 76,000 annually. And it's, it's, right now, I checked with Stephen, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the sewer, sewer station is doing fine. We just got the sewer lift station taken care of, remodeled, I guess. station is doing fine, we just got the sewer lift station taken care of, remodeled, I guess, refurbished, and you've got, you wanna give them a quick little update on things that you can do to keep the cost down, so we don't have to buy another sewer lift station? And you know, so this, when I say that, keep in mind, I know we said that in years past, this is a different approach, but listening to Stephen, I think you'll see why there's no reason to go set aside and do a, what do we have, 170,000 for permitting and engineering?
That's what the, the budget says, 170. The pumps and motors that we put in, in the wet well at the lift station, they can actually chew up mop heads and kind of dispose of anything other than toilet paper or whatever put in it. The only thing we're gonna do as far as maintenance is the, the nozzles inside the pods need to, need to get replaced, from my understanding, they, they haven't. So we've been kind of doing 20 at a time, 20 nozzles is about 200 bucks. So other than that, the sewer lift stations is, the, the, is good. The system's never gonna get any bigger, so I think we're fine there.
And you can, you can, if the pump goes out, you can repair it yourself, you've got one on standby?
Yes.
We'll have?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate that. Drainage fund, we didn't use the money, because, again, we slowed our roll in expenditures because of what we found out earlier this year with our, our information wasn't good, our financial data. So as we flush it out, I kind of slowed everything down, and that's one of the things, that, and we're also switching general, general engineers, so that's another reason why that, that money's still sitting there, and we won't sign that contract until we get a complete break from Cobb Finley. The Marina fund, we have discussed trailer fees last year a little bit, locker fee, locker fees are kind of going down, I think, I don't see Ronnie tonight, but I don't think, from what I'm seeing in revenue, it's not hitting as high as it did this time last year. Trailer fees was talked about, and I know that was something that, I don't know if we got time to bring it up, we can always do it after the regular session. Okay. So let me go ahead and talk about this, and we'll bring that one back here tonight still, but I, just so I can touch up on, touch a few more things. As I said, in 2025, we slowed our roll on expenditures, especially major ones, we didn't do the water wells, again, until we know for sure what these accounts are, and how much we have spent, how much we have available, and until, honestly, until some of the audits, the last couple remaining ones are done, it's more prudent just to back off and make sure we're, we're on solid ground. The fiscal year 23, that I'm also gonna be recommending a delay in any use of the, of the revenue until, on any major thing. Obviously, if there's a cost of living adjustment, I think we can do that, it's not as big, but I'm talking about like a $300,000 expenditure for refurbishing the elevated storage tank number two. It's popped, it had a little leak this week, or was it a couple months back? It's holding, we have no reason to think it won't, but that's something really important. But delaying that until the, we're starting getting ready to get the 23, 24 on August 12th, we're gonna, 23, I'm sorry, 22, 23. 23, 24 fiscal year audit is in the pipeline, reconciliations are done, we're ready to go, except for loading up some things that she's still working on, and 25 is even in better shape, I think they're like 90% of all the reconciliations on the bank stuff has been done. I think 95, you told me today, so we're up to date on that. I would suggest we just hold off on those major expenditures, even if we, you all approve a new police patrol unit, or an excavator, whatever it may be, slow, let's just keep things slowed down until we get 25 audit. You'll get it around that, before the 31st of March of next year. And then if that looks good, and we know where we're standing, then we'll go ahead and start methodically going at the most important ones first. That's the, probably the best, most prudent way, because, because of what we found in this conversion fiasco, the chart of accounts, we knew they weren't good, and we signed off on it, I guess, a year or two, year and a half ago, whatever, that these are the chart accounts we're gonna use, and they're not working, so.
Dennis, I really like that approach, because I don't know that we should go out on a limb on anything until we understand our fund balances by fund.
Yeah.
So I am so happy to hear you say that, and I will definitely support that concept.
Delays until that audit's been surrendered for the 25 fiscal year that we're in right now. And I'll wrap this. Okay. Roadwork, we, we'll program that in, and I don't, we just started getting our no-new-revenue rate and the voter approval rate stuff from the tax appraisal district today, so, did you get that information out to them? Okay. So what we'll do is, we'll go ahead and get that more formally on the 12th of August, and start getting it posted. The law says by August 7th or soon thereafter, and so we'll do it on the 12th, since, but you've already got the information. But the thing of it is.
I don't have it.
Oh.
I don't, I didn't get it.
It should be, did you?
The, the proposal from the appraisal on our value of our properties and what that rate would look like.
No, it's the actual rate, it's the actual calculation rate.
No new revenue.
Yeah, no new revenue, and is it in there? It's on the last slide.
I haven't seen it.
Okay, well, we'll get it to you, we'll get it to you.
Okay, okay.
Okay. The thing of it is, though, we'll, we're gonna go ahead and get on the website, there's certain things this laws requires, we'll go do that, and it will make it a part of the budget. But what I want to say is, even though there's, in the fiscal year 26, there is a, there is, for example, roads, that's one of the things, again, we, we have the control over and not get ahead of ourselves. But the good news is, just like this fiscal year, dealing with roads, and I know it's a 10-year program, but if you look at the vendor, you remember we backed off about a 150,000, something like that? We went from 600,000 to, I think it was 160, we went down to 440 roughly? Well, the vendor is, they had a great meeting, he talked to Nida and gave us some feedback and said they'll go ahead and do the whole year's worth of work for the, for the 440 that's remaining. So it's, it's a blessing that we, that's $150,000 less than what, than we expected. Is that, is that right? All of year one will be done, and we're gonna get some, about eight big potholes filled at the same time, so it's, it's good news, and so we didn't lose anything in that, the last budget that we did to take care of that fire program, getting it started up, we're, we're still getting the same work done that we had originally planned for, so that's good. And now whether we get that in the future years, I don't know, but I thought it was a blessing.
It said discount.
Yeah, well, and we wouldn't have been able to do it if we already had a contract initiated with them, because the law doesn't, anything like that is more than 25%, it would, or a certain percentage point or something, but there'll, there'd be some rules applied, but we haven't issued a contract yet, we, in fact, we sent it off today. Yeah, it got sent today, so they sign it, we sign it, and they, they'll start advertising, doing notifications, but so will we in-house, and making sure the word is out, and that the roadwork's about to begin, and this is where it's at, and I think that's good news. So you'll, you'll see that movement probably within, what, a couple weeks?
It's good.
Yeah, it's, it's good. Well, and I apologize for the length of time it takes to get here, but, you know, there's just little, there's those things going in all different directions, but I, but the good news is, we're here, and that's good. And other than that, I think that's pretty much what I wanted to share with you. I know we're gonna come back after the regular session to talk about the Marina fund, and of course, anything you all want to talk about in fiscal year 26, it's an open door there.
Okay. We got two items left on our workshop. One will not be discussed this evening, the dangerous building discussion. Mike is currently at the inspector school at Teaks, so he is not available to bring us up to speed on that, so that will be postponed until a later date. And then just due to the time, it's already 6 o'clock, so the executive session, we will, when we reconvene after regular, after the regular session, we'll take care of business that we got on here, we'll reconvene, we'll discuss the Marina stuff, and then we can go into executive session. So let's take five minutes.
I have a quick, I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am? Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I got a note from, I got a text message from a resident that said she doesn't think that the workshop's being livestreamed, so I just wanna make sure the real session's being livestreamed, the regular session. Thanks.
Yeah, they, they.
Being livestreamed? Okay.
Our indications here are that it is, but there's no telling where it's going, so, okay. Uh, let's see, 1801, take five.